Okay, so at 7:30. I'm Janet Anderson and I call to order the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, July 21st, 2020 at 7:30 PM. Before I go any further, I am confirming that Kirsten has started recording this meeting. And this meeting is happening via Zoom with live streaming to YouTube on the Lewisboro TV channel. The public can view the meeting there. And we have confirmed that the feed is active and working. Note, in accordance with the Governor's executive orders, no one is at our usual meeting location at 79 Bauton. I have confirmed with Kirsten, our Planning Board Administrator, that the meeting has been duly noticed. Legal notice requirements have been fulfilled. Notice was placed on the Town of Lewisboro website, including email distributions from the town and the library. And it has been posted on Facebook. So with me on this Zoom conference from the Town of Lewisboro are members of the Planning Board, Jerome Kerner, Greg LaSorsa, Maureen McGuire, Rich Sklarin, and myself. We have a quorum, and so we therefore can vote on any matters that come before the Board. Also on the conference are our consultant Jan Johansson and Council Judge Seibert, the Planning Board Administrator Kirsten Conrad, and the CAC Chair John Wolf. So despite the uncertainty caused by the novel coronavirus, we, the Planning Board, continue to function on behalf of the town. The Governor's Executive Order Number 202.1, which has been renewed, enables us to meet remotely and electronically. In accordance with the executive order, we intend to post both the recording and later a transcript of this meeting to the town website. And of course, we will document our actions in meeting minutes. We do not have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. We do not expect to take public comments. The public can see and hear this meeting live on the Lewisboro TV YouTube channel. And some, I believe, have joined this Zoom meeting. We ask any applicants that are not currently engaging in dialogue to mute their lines. This will help everyone here over the inevitable background noises. To those whose lines are open, I remind you that we should do our best to avoid crosstalk. As customary on these Zoom calls, we will ask applicants to refrain from addressing the Board until the Board and its consultants call upon them, direct a specific question. And when we vote, I will again poll the Board members individually. So I want to thank everybody in advance for understanding as we continue to work and improve this process. So with that, let's get started. The first item on the agenda is a sketch plan review of calendar number 11-19 PB, 91-19 WP, and 10-19 SW. The MacArthur and Salazar Residence at 40 Old Pond Road, South Salem, which is an application for site plan, wetland activity, and stormwater permits in connection with the reconstruction of a lakeside cottage. So I am not sure who is the first to want to comment on this.
I'll start.
Okay?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so good evening. The Board has reviewed this project on several occasions. And I think we got some positive feedback from the Board about the direction we were going in. And we went off to the zoning board last month. And we obtained all the variances that we require for this project. And so tonight, I'll be brief, and I'll turn it over to Jerry Barrett in a minute. Tonight, we're back before you to have Jerry outline any changes to the plan since you last saw it. And also to address the several comments from Keller and Sessions in their memo of July 16th. Just briefly, the plan is to demolish the existing three-story house, which is in terrible condition, state of disrepair, as well as the detached garage. Remove a long, steep, unprotected driveway. That's just a chute for stormwater down to the lake that's going to come out. And in its place, Billy MacArthur and his family wish to build a two-family residence at the lower, in the lower building. And then a one, I'm sorry, in the upper building, and then a one-bedroom cabana in the lower building. I note that the cabana, the one closest to the lake, is still going to be considerably further from the lake than the existing residence. So we think we're moving in the right direction. And I'm going to have Jerry put up on a screen and share his plans on the screen and describe any changes. And I know Jerry has to get to another meeting, so let's get him on board.
One comment, I think you said build a two-family residence, just for the record. I think you meant a two-story or a two-bedroom, okay.
Yes, a two-bedroom residence, correct.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if I said two-family. No, this is a single-family residential zoning. Jerry, are you with us?
He is, do we have to unmute him?
Does anyone see my screen?
Yes.
Michael, can you see my screen?
Oh, no, I see you.
Try it again.
In all your handsome glory.
I've invariably practiced this all afternoon, and then time comes, I invariably have a problem. Let me try it again.
Well, Jerry, you need permission to screen share. You got to be a co-host or a host. I don't think you can share. No?
I don't think so. We've had people screen share before.
Usually you have to give it to them, Jan, I think.
Yeah.
For some reason, I have my PDFs ready to go.
Yeah, you can go into.
Do you have a green, I'm sorry, do you have a green screen share on the bottom of your screen?
The share screen, green button, right?
Yeah, and it does say one participant can share at a time. So you're a participant, you should be able to share.
I should be able to share, and why am I not?
All participants can share.
Why am I not seeing my drawings?
Well, I do have the, whoops.
There it goes.
There you go.
Billy did it.
I just, I just put it up.
All right, Billy, go to sheet one, please, Billy. Billy, do you have sheet one up, or is that my screen?
I believe that's Billy's screen that we've seen.
Yeah, Jerry, I have the site plan. If you go by name.
The site information plan is up?
Yes.
Yes.
So the site information plan, what this is showing us is just basically what's out there now. You'll notice the existing residence is very close to the lake. There's a small retaining wall, then there's a garage up on the top. And you know, we just have photographs on there that demonstrate that it is in severe condition. It's really just falling down and rotting away. It's a steep site. You can see we've identified the steep slopes. And it's primarily, you know, a wooded lot. And it's, the development area is down by the lake. Let's see if we can get to sheet two. I'm going to try to just click and see if mine pops up. Now I got you on. Gosh, you know, I practiced this all afternoon. This is, my goodness, this is the wrong job. Billy, can you go to sheet two?
Yes, sir.
I think you stopped sharing.
Yeah, I'm changing files. Sorry about that.
So what we have here is we have what was what we call the zoning conformance plan. As Michael, I think, indicated, we have been to the ZBA. The project required four variances. Number one is the lake studio, and that's because it was, it was a bit oversized. And that variance was granted. I think it's about 900 square feet of living space. And various, number two, and I'd like to point out that based on the Planning Board's sidewalk, the lake studio used to be closer to the lake. And Planning Board members requested that we try to make the lake studio be, you know, conform to the 40-foot side yard setback. So we did that. We pushed that back. It required that Teo and I adjust the elevations to make all the vertical adjustments work, which we did. We had to add a couple of walls, but we got it all to work. And the second variance was because the, which is going to be the primary residence, it's over this yellow setback line. And so that's number two on your screen, and that variance was granted. It's slightly over. Variance number three was there's a, there's a deck on the second level of the, of the home, which you could see, and you look at the cottage rear elevation, which is picture number two on the top. And that deck, it also encroaches over that rear yard setback line, and that variance was granted. And number three was the patio. And the patio, according to the building inspector, if it's on a concrete base, it is a structure, and therefore that also had to comply with the rear yard setback. Of course, there's nothing, this is all vacant land up in this area here. There's no neighbors to impact. So that variance was also granted. So as far as the zoning board was concerned, that, you know, we're good, and we know we're happy about that. And we'd like to move on with the planning board. So Billy, can you go to the next one, please? Okay, so what we have here is, there's, there's, there's two pages here. And there, well, there's, there's, there's two view, viewports. The one on the left is the removals plan. So everything you see in red striping, that's what's coming out. And of course, it's that big driveway that Michael noted, notes earlier, that big driveway is like a chute that is just sending stormwater straight into the lake. And then, of course, the big building, the big main story, brambling house, and it has patios around it. So that's all coming out. We also show the tree removals on that plan, the trees that need to come out as a result of this. On the right is our site plan, and we've color-coded, you know, we've key-coded the site plan. And, you know, down below, number A, that is the lakeside cottage. It has a small, it has a patio area there. And then you go up some steps, and you get up to the main residence. It's a terrace, we're going to terrace the site with retaining walls. And what will happen is you'll pull in underneath, and you'll park underneath. And then the residence will be above the garage. And there's a patio on the back of that, H, are the existing septic areas. And what's new on this plan is where you see, where you see area E, E, Q, and C up on the top of the page. And when we were at the sidewalk, we were discussing that all of that stormwater comes racing down that hill. It's a very steep hill, and it just washes right through that area. And we were talking about, you know, how can we better control that? So it just doesn't come blowing through, particularly during construction, when, you know, you have the earth open and all that water coming through. So what we've proposed on CC is a, is a, is a, is a high-density core log. It's a coconut fiber log. They come in various dimensions. We're going to propose something like an 18-inch log, which is a very heavy log. That gets staked in place. And what happens is the stormwater hits that log, and it runs along the face of the log. And then there's an existing drainage channel that's labeled Q on your plan in the upper left. We're going to restore that channel. And then as that channel comes down, and there's a couple of rock outcrops. And we were out there, and we talked about, you know, we could put a Gabion basket, three Gabion baskets across that and tie that in. So Gabion baskets, as you know, are the, are the wire baskets, they're PVC coated, so they don't rust. And you fill them with like five-inch rip, riprap stones, and then you wire them together. And the weight of them keep them in place. And the beauty of it is, as the stormwater comes and hits those Gabion baskets, it, it breaks the velocity of that stormwater, which is going to be significant coming down this, this hill. As it breaks the velocity, it drops the sediment behind it, so it becomes a sediment sump. So that sediment can be cleaned out a couple of times a year. And then what happens is the Gabion baskets are filled with rocks. It's like a void, so the water will go right through it, and it will continue down the slope into the lake. So this is a way to slow down that water, to take some, take some of the stormwater, take some of the, take some of the sediment out of it. So we think it's, it's a good water quality improvement measure for the long term. And it will not only protect the site during construction when we have, you know, the soil open, but for the long term, it'll route the water around that. We do have permission from the Westchester Land Trust to, to, to work on their property. And that, that really was something that came out of the sidewalk with discussions with the planning board. And I think that's really a great, a great win for this project and for the lake. Other things we have on V, that's a, that's a retaining wall that's going to be built. It's about a three or four-foot retaining wall to hold the slope back. And, you know, we have mitigation areas shown. But I think, you know, it's more of the site plan type thing. And so that's kind of the, I think what's new on the plan is that, you know, we, we, we moved the cottage back, we've got the cottage away from the lake, so it's zoning compliant. And, you know, we've also managed the stormwater to get the stormwater, so it's not coming racing through in the existing condition, you know, again, going back to what Michael said. It's like a chute, that water was just coming down, it's shooting right into the lake. So we, we, we think this is, this is a good plus for the project. Billy, can we move on to the next page, please?
Just a clarification, if I can, the core, core log that you're going to put there, is that, that will get replaced with a, with a more permanent wall later? That's a construction?
No, the, the, the beauty of the core log is that, why we start with like an 18-inch high density, there's all different kinds of densities. So we get the one that's the most dense, like you could stand on it, and it won't even deflect. And it gets staked in, in, in place periodically. But the beauty of the core log, it takes five to seven years to rock. And during that five to seven years, what happens is because the core log is, it's porous, it's like a coconut fiber, the vegetation actually grows through the log, and the roots of the vegetation actually stabilize it, and it becomes a permanent diversion. And, you know, after that, below that, we have the stone wall. But, you know, if at one time that it does become problematic, the simple solution is just replace the core log. But our experience is it creates a permanent, a permanent hump in the landscape that allows that channels the water. So it's really a great product.
Thank you.
Billy, I think we're going to go to page four.
Jerry, you should be, I think I'm already sharing the mitigation page. Let me know if that's not what you need.
I wanted, I wanted you to go back one, to number four.
Okay.
So one of the things, you know, I think a lot of the comments that came up in the, in the memo had to do with stormwater management. Unfortunately, Alan Pilch, the project engineer, is at another meeting in another town this evening. So he hasn't been able to join us, but I talked to him at length today. And he does feel that, that we could certainly work through all these comments in conjunction with, with Keller and Sessions. And we think we can resolve all these, all these, all, all these issues. So this is our erosion control plan, and, you know, it's, it's, it's the series, you know, that, that heavy dark line you see around there, that is the, that is the grading limit line. And then, you know, down below, if you look down on the lakeside, on the front side of that, we have a silt fence, and then on the other side of that, we have another core log. It won't be an 18-inch core log, because it's only temporary, it'll probably be more like an eight-inch. That behind the silt fence, because that bolsters the silt fence, and it keeps it from blowing out. The blue areas you see, those are temporary sediment basins that, you know, where water can pool up and settle out, and then the sediments can be taken out. The red striping you see, that's slope matting. There will be, anytime we have a slope greater than, greater than one on three, it will be, it'll be stabilized with slope matting and seeded. There's several layers of silt fencing going up the hill. There's anti-tracking pad on the top. We know there's a, there's a few other items that the town planner has asked to put on the plan. We have, you'll see the septic area is, we show it with some construction fencing on, on the, on the outside. I think they would like it to be totally enclosed. We could certainly do that. So again, all of those comments, we think that we can address all of those comments. And, you know, and as far as the stormwater, you know, stormwater, we're going to, you know, protect all the basins. Basically, we'll wait, I'll talk about the stormwater when we get to the next plan. But Billy, we can go to the mitigation plan. By the way, before you go, this, this plan is a little clearer. It kind of shows the two rock outcrops over on the left, where we're going to put the Gabion baskets in between to act as that stormwater baffle. And then that water's going to, that ditch is there, it's labeled ditch, that's there now. And we're just going to restore it and stabilize it with more rock. And we'll be adding more boulders to the end of it. Again, too, as that water comes down, we'll be breaking the velocity and slowing it down, so we prevent erosion going on. So I think that's going to be a big improvement to the overall site area. We can go to the mitigation now, Bill. So previously, you know, when we had, when we were last before the Board, we had a mitigation plan. And, you know, we tried to get the one-to-one mitigation all on the site. And there were some of the areas that I felt, I think that the town planner and the planning board felt really didn't meet the criteria or the, or the, meet the bar for what was suitable mitigation. And so we had to look for other areas. And it just so happened is that area to the left, that you'll see the, you know, the MacArthur property line where it borders the Westchester Land Trust, that's that vertical black line you see, just left of the house. And there's a stone wall about 80 feet away. You'll see that, you see the stone patio down by the lake, and then you look over, and there's an old dock, and then there's a stone wall. So that area in there is about 80 feet, 60 feet. And the area is just chock full of, it's just chock full of, you know, the typical invasives. It's primarily Japanese barberry in there. Other than that, there's not much in the under story. I think the deer ate everything else, and the only thing left is the, is the barberry. So we were talking, you know, why can't we use that? And we, Billy and Michael worked with the land trust, and we got permission to go in there and to take out that Japanese barberry. So our mitigation is, on that portion of the land trust property is, you know, the aforementioned, you know, the stormwater management areas, you know, what we're doing with that gravel channel and the Gabion baskets. But also, we're going to take out, we're going to take out that Japanese barberry, then we'll go spot in some native shrubs as we go. And working with Steve Coleman on this, who's the wetland scientist for the project, the technique that we're going to be using to get rid of this Japanese barberry is the, because we don't really want to cut it out or rip out the roots. We rip out the roots, we'll be exposing the soil. We expose the soil, we get a rainstorm, it's all going to be, you know, washing down to the lake. We discussed this with the land trust, and, and Steve Coleman's got extensive experience with this, and so does the land trust. So the technique is going to be, what happens is you, you actually get a propane torch. They have a, they have a thing like a, you know, the little bottle that you use for your grill. Well, they have that type of thing that goes in a backpack. And you have a little flame lamp. And what you do is you go to the root crown of these barberry bushes, and you flame it. And when you flame it, it, it basically kills the plant. Then you wait, I think, I don't know, I can't remember exactly. It's about a week or so, you go back and you flame it again, and it actually kills the plant. Once the plant is dead, you go in there, you clip off the dead, and you take it out. And the beauty of it is the root system stay in the ground, stabilize the soil. There's no soil disturbance. And yet we have, the barberry is gone, and the plant is dead. So it's not even going to re-sprout, because we've killed the roots. And then, of course, we'll go in there, and we'll, we'll spot that through. We do need to, we are looking for some direction to the Board if this mitigation is going to be acceptable. I think with that, we can easily get to one-to-one. And, and then, you know, if, if we're on the right track here, you know, we'll go through. And for our next submittal, we will actually, you know, create this planting plan and label all the plants. And, you know, and obviously, we'll be using native plants. And we'll be showing the Board what the, what the overall planting plan will be. And Billy, let's go to the next one, is going to be the, is going to be the Alan Pilch's drainage plan. So I can just kind of walk the Board through what Alan came up with. So Alan went out there, and he did his soil testing. And it is, it's, it's a tough site. He really couldn't find suitable areas to, you know, to, to, to do traditional stormwater infiltration with Coltech units. And so what he ended up doing was capturing, I think it's labeled civil or something. There you go, that's it. So what Alan's going to be doing is, he's going to be capturing the, the surface water in a series of storm drains, starting up at the top. He'll be picking up the roof drainage and putting it into that little basin depression area that was formerly a rain garden. He's going to retrofit that, so it's not going to be a rain garden anymore. But it's still going to function as a depression to collect stormwater. And then that stormwater, and we collect the stormwater off of the driveway in catch basins. We collect the stormwater from behind the stone wall to the right of the driveway as you pull in. And we have weep holes in that, in that, in that retaining wall by the driveway. So whatever water doesn't, whatever surface water, most of the, most of the water will be diverted. But there will be a little bit, and that will bleed out onto the driveway. It'll be picked up in the basins. Then he routes it all down to the stormwater management area, which is down, down on the, on the lower left. And that's really what Alan calls a stormwater detention facility. And the detention facility, meaning he's going to detain the water in it, because you can't infiltrate it, the groundwater is too high, the bedrock is too high. It's just not suitable for infiltration. So what he'll be doing is, he'll be detaining the water. And then once that water is detained, that the water from the cottage, from the, from the cabana, that's also going to go into there. And then as that fills up, he has a, a, a small diameter pipe that serves as an overflow pipe. And that overflow pipe is, it slowly lets the water back out. And we bring that over to what's called a level spreader, which is, you know, an eight to 10-foot-long berm. And the water pulls up behind it, and once it pulls up behind it, it overtops it like a dam. So there, so it's a sheet flow over the top, it's not a concentrated point flow. Our mitigation plan will be modified to plant that heavily on the downside of that. So number one, it'll be screened. Number two, it'll stabilize all the soils. But the idea is that detention facility is designed to capture, you know, the required amount of runoff, the property, based on the development. And it will let it out at the pre-development rate. So Alan's, Alan's comfortable that he can address all of the, all of the comments noted by the town engineer. And, you know, we're looking forward to being able to just sit down and get those things worked out, as well as the site plan issues, and then get back in, in front of the Board to move the project along.
Okay, do you, is that, is that the last of what you want to show us?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I think perhaps it makes sense next to go to, unless anybody on the Board has questions, to ask Jan to go through his memo?
I have a couple of questions, but I'm wondering if Jan's memo will address, will address them. So I'm happy to wait.
Okay.
Sure. Just go over the, the permits and approvals that are required for the project. It's before the Planning Board for a, you can hear me, right?
Yes.
For a wetland permit and a stormwater permit. The applicant's been before the zoning board of appeals for a variety of variances. The project does require approval from the New York City DEP for what they call an individual residential stormwater permit. So they'll be reviewing the SWIP. Project requires coverage under the DC Speedies permit because of the area of disturbance being over 5,000 square feet. And the property is in the flood plain, so it requires a flood development permit from the town building inspector. We do have a number of comments, but I would like to say that I, I do think that, you know, it's a beneficial plan and a vast improvement upon the existing conditions. So in light of, you know, comments that we do have, I just wanted to point that out. But at the end of the day, I think it's going to be a superior project from the existing condition. We did have some, again, comments about the, the existing road that services the project. The ownership of the road, I know a portion of it is owned by the town. A portion is privately owned. A portion is privately owned. Where does that, you know, that ownership transition? What's the width of the road? We were really looking for existing conditions, kind of plan of, of, of the, of the road and the access and the ownership. And we do feel that the application should be referred to the fire department just because it is a very narrow, tight road and access is limited. So I would like to see the, the application be referred to the fire department. And I'd also like to confirm with either the building inspector or council that a 280A variance, 280A of the New York State town law is not required. Generally, when issuing a building permit for a single-family residence on a lot that does not have public access, such a variance is required. That may not be the case because the property was previously developed with the residents. But I would like that clarified. The mitigation plan, they are, as Barry mentioned, utilizing a significant portion of an adjacent property for mitigation. That is allowed under the code, but it's not the preferred method. Therefore, I would recommend that all existing onsite, you know, the ability to provide mitigation onsite be, you know, fully kind of exacerbated before they move off site. I don't think that they'll be able to achieve number one onsite. But I do believe there's additional areas onsite that should be considered for mitigation. That would be as beneficial, if not more beneficial than using the adjacent property. As Jerry mentioned, he'll continue to advance the mitigation plan. We'll want to see a final planting plan. We'll want to see the form of the restricted area along the lake that they're proposing, whether that's going to be a declaration or true conservation easement. There is some indication from the Westchester Land Trust. They sent a letter that they're willing to work with the, the applicant in developing or allowing them to mitigate on their property. But there's no, certainly no formal approval for that to happen. We'll need to see a formal agreement. I've also not walked the Westchester Land Trust property, so I'd like to, to see that. The, there's some forms of mitigation that the applicant identified that are probably not allowed to be counted as mitigation under the code. I think there are some references to, you know, erosion and sediment controls. That's typically not counted, that's just required. Same with stormwater management. Stormwater management practices are otherwise required by our code. So they can't be counted as mitigation, wetland mitigation. But you know, those are things with that will, will work out. Happy to meet with the applicant and the project team to work out some of those details. We also like to see a, a mitigation installation protocol and a, and a, a long-term maintenance protocol for both the onsite and the offsite mitigation. There are a series of retaining walls on the property. Anything over four feet requires an engineer's design. We've noted that. There's a Westchester County Department of Health approval for the new septic tank. And also their review of the floor plans to determine that there's no increase in bedroom count. So we wait that. There's a lot of construction details that, that need to be provided once the plan gets further developed. I think we're in general agreement with the, the stormwater pollution prevention plan and its concepts. We did have a couple of comments, but nothing that can't be kind of further evaluated and massaged a little bit. That was, that was our general comment. It's the road, it's the mitigation, the construction details and kind of formalizing the SWIP.
Okay, Maureen, did you have any additional comments or questions?
Yes, I am, I've never heard of the core log. So I just wondered, I wanted to reach out to anyone here to see if they've had experience with it. Besides Jerry, I, you gave me your experience, but anyone on the, the planning board or any of our consultants?
Yeah, we, we, that is a, a practice that we see a lot. We, we spec it quite often. I don't disagree with anything Jerry said about the core log. It does, they do last a very long time. You can actually plant within them. And they, they just kind of become part of the natural environment over a number of years. But we can take a look at the particular areas that they're proposing to use the core log to make sure they're appropriate. But it's definitely a valuable tool.
Okay, great. And the technique you, you described, Jerry, the flaming, the Japanese barberry. I, I have heard of that because I was trying to get rid of some of the roots that are growing in my drive, my gravel driveway. I ended up not doing it. But question for you, if you're just going to be kind of, you know, flaming and maybe cutting off the growth at the ground level, it sounds like, don't you have to also remove the roots? Help me understand that a little better.
Yeah, the idea is, the idea is by flaming the root crown, you know, right where it comes out and it, and it, you know, branches off. By feeding that, I think what, what, what's happening is, you know, you're, 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 you're taking those, you know, what is it, you know, the, you know, the, the, the vessels of the, you know, the xylem and the phloem, whatever it is, it sends the, it sends the nutrients in the water up and it sends the stuff back down. You're, you're toasted that. So that gets destroyed. So there's nothing left. There's, there's no vascular system left in the plant and it just dries up. It just dries up and dies.
Well, that, so that my question is more, when it dries up and dies, because there's no energy eating back, you know, from the roots, do the roots just disintegrate? You leave it alone and it disintegrates?
Ultimately, I guess they would, ultimately, I guess they would rot in place ultimately. But the idea is you're not pulling them out, you're leaving them there. So they're, they're staying intact in the ground and it will take years for them to rot away. And you know, by that point, the ground surface is still growing other vegetation.
Right, but you wouldn't be able to obviously plant anything where that Japanese barberry was because there's still a root system intact, which will take years to
That's correct.
die away.
We would, what we, what we talked about with the Westchester Land Trust when we do go in there to put some plantings and they were talking about, they'd like to see ferns. They think ferns are, 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 are a great solution there. And the nice thing about the ferns is, you know, number one, they're not expensive. Number two, the deer don't eat them. And we can get them small enough that, you know, instead of like in a one gallon pot where you have to dig a hole, we can get them in like two-inch pots. So you don't have to make a very big hole. So you're doing very little ground disturbance, which is the key on, on a slope of that gradient.
Okay, thanks. And Janet, were you going to go over the Three Lakes Council memo? Oh, sorry.
I can't, but I see Jerome has his hand up.
Yeah. Yeah, and number 15 of your comments referred to visual testing of test holes for the, to test the infiltration rate. And I heard the comment from the engineer saying that it would be no infiltration because of the
There's one, there's one area, there's one stormwater practice. There's a rain garden that's proposed further up slope by the main house that isn't infiltration practice. Down by the lake, there's, there's no ability because of the high groundwater table. But there is one infiltration practice. It's a rain garden. And there's years of the garage are directed there.
Okay.
Anyone else have comments? All right, I do have a couple of, I guess, questions. One of the thing, well, and maybe I'll start by bringing up some of the Three Lakes Council comments. And also I believe there's a comment from the CAC that looks for more planting down close to the lake. I just put my, hang on.
By the way, we have no problem with it. I've talked to Billy about it. We will be enjoying more planting down by the lake. And I think that'll dovetail with what Jan was saying about taking advantage of more opportunities on the site.
That's exactly where I was talking about, Jerry.
Yeah.
So the Three, the Three Lakes Council, which, so you know, because I am involved with the Three Lakes Council, I was recused myself from the Three Lakes Council in order to stay on the planning board here. I think what they have asked for is, is more information about the, the curtain drain that will make sure that it avoids the, the septic system area. And I think that has been done in this new, new plan. They're trying to ask for the rainwater to be kept up at the higher levels. I don't know, again, it's pretty rocky and steep, so I don't know if that's possible. They do recommend a FosRid unit or it's similar to a White Knight unit or something like that. I, I doubt that that would be something that is required by Westchester County Department of Health. But if it's not required, it might, if, if the applicant does look at it, it might be something that could be considered as a form of mitigation. They are looking at, or they ask to look at pervasive surfaces for driveway and the patios. They're concerned about the removal of the number of trees. I think we talked somewhat about that in the last meeting. And there was concern about the condition of many of these trees. And I think that's really the summary of the two. I summarized both of the memos that they had, that they had sent. Other than asking for, they also asked for a public hearing just to let, I think, the lake community know what was going on. So those are the Three Lakes Council memos. I do have a couple of questions, again, even about the core log and the vegetation that would be planted, although the fact that it's ferns is a little bit better. I think of that area as quite shady. And so with the, I wanted to know whether the log would actually grow vegetation in a fairly shady area? Or will it require some planting of things like, you know, very shade-friendly plants that would, that would take off there?
No, I think that's a, that's a good point. I think it's a good point with the core log now that you say that. It probably wouldn't be a bad idea to plant some, you know, small shrubs and ferns around that core log to help, to help anchor that area in there. You know, we would have to come up with, with a plant that will tolerate the deer. I'm thinking maybe spice bush. You know, we'd have to think of the ones that they, that they don't eat. But the ferns, you know, as Jan was saying, the ferns will actually grow right through it. They will actually grow, the water just wicks through these things. So we could certainly add that to the, we could certainly add that to our planting plan around that core log to help, to help knit those soils together and stabilize that area. As far as the trees go, we're only taking down trees that have to come down because we're grading. And we're not taking down anything other than that. I think we had about seven trees that were, were, were coming down. I know as far as the stormwater goes, Alan Pilchard, the, the, the project engineer, he was really, I guess, that saying between a hard place and a rock, that he had basically that one sliver down, down at the lower area where he can put that detention facility in there. You know, the, the, the rub with the rain garden up above, as Jan pointed out, that technically it's supposed to be in an area of virgin soils. And of course, we're grading in that area. So we're not going to be able to call it a rain garden, but we might be able to redesign that and re-categorize it as an infiltration basin because it, 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 it will pergrate because that whole area is going to be backfilled with gravelly soils. Because remember, we, that's the area that we have to put that wall in and we have to fill with gravel to hold that driveway. So it really is going to be a great area. It'll, it'll, it'll really work well. So you know, so a lot of the roof runoff, for instance, will come out. You know, we'll have to have weep holes in those walls, obviously, to let the water back out. But it'll really slow down that water and that'll be a treatment facility there. But as far as trying to get anything else, Alan, you know, he beat the bushes out there. That was really the only place that he could get suitable soil depth to get that detention facility in of the size it needed to be to control, you know, what's going on.
Okay.
Comments on the core log. We've had good success with using like switchgrass and Pennsylvania sage and a few of the grass ground covers. They take very well and create a nice dense filter on top of the core log. And so that's another option that could be used in a shady area like that.
It can be, okay. Cause I, I think of grasses often as a, not that good in shade. But if, I defer to your expertise and experience.
Good, Steve, that's a good idea. I see that in the woods all the time.
Okay. The other thing I would, I personally would like more clarity on what exactly is going to happen with the Westchester Land Trust land. I think the dock that is, that is used is off of the Westchester Land Trust land. There was some discussion about it either being a, a change of ownership or, you know, perhaps a license agreement. I, I just, I feel like we need some clarity on that.
Yeah, I can take that, Jen. I can take that. And before we do, can I just say, I, I did talk to Pio Lombardo, who's the, I guess, who makes this FosRid systems. Those are super expensive, Janet. I mean, we're talking a lot, a lot of money, right? Like, so, so, I mean, I, I would be very happy to continue to explore and work with you guys, but I, I think that would be a huge stretch in addition to everything that we're already doing to this project. So I did want to point that out.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for investigating that.
No worries. Look, I think we've done a lot of progress with the Westchester Land Trust. They're actually quite excited about this project. As you know, a lot of them come from a background of, you know, land management. And I know especially, you know, Brendan, who has been sort of leading this from their side. He's actually been proposing techniques and he's very excited about the whole, the whole, the whole project. The, the reality is that we've, we've agreed to, to, to get, for purposes of this application, just that intent on them to allow us to work on the site because of the urgency. So they recognize this is ultimately required in order for us to make progress. So that's why they issued that letter of intent. That is not an actual approval. It's just an intent letter where they inform you of what they're ultimately looking to do. So that's going to be officialized and formalized once you guys tell us that this is suitable, right? We're not going to spend a lot of time putting documents together for something that ultimately may not be suitable. So once you guys tell us that this is suitable, then we'll go in and formalize that, that specific purpose for the mitigation. They also gave us access to 60 feet into their property, Janet, as, as part of this intent. So that, that, that sort of covers that patio and an area where the dock ultimately launches. That dock is, is a floating dock and can be moved anywhere in, in the property. And luckily I do, you know, we do have over 150 feet of lakefront. So I'm not too concerned about where that dock goes, to be honest. You know, I'm pretty relaxed about that. We, we do, we do discuss a way to ultimately formalize our use of that piece of, of the land. And they, they've proposed a couple of things, potentially a, a land swap. I do own another lot at the top of the mountain that we may just swap for an area on their site. They also potentially, you know, would be open to, to just moving the property line. But I think we, we are just waiting for guy, you know, guidance from you in that this is all going to work out before we ultimately spend time and money because it's going to require a lot of work, obviously with Michael. And, you know, we need to then come back to you for that proposal. But that's, in my mind, that's kind of, you know, going to happen once we know this is actually something we'll be able to work off.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry. So that was Brendan Murphy that you're working with at Westchester Land Trust?
Yeah, we've, we've, you know, I've probably talked to him, you know, 50 times in the last couple of months. So look, they, they are So, look, they, they are very glad that they're going to have a neighbor that's ultimately not only going to guarantee and maintain their property, but, you know, also grant them access, right? Because they don't have any access to that piece of land. So they, they also want to work with us in that regard.
Okay, Jerome, it looks, I see you waving.
Just a quick comment, just to perhaps save some time, and maybe it's redundant to say it, but I think there will be consultation with our council on the wording of that access agreement, because I think it's going to have to be in perpetuity in order to maintain, as you say, the sediment and have the way that that Gabion cell will be working. So it shouldn't just be installation, it should be ongoing access.
And just some clear, it may not be an easement. We may just purchase that piece of property. So again, we may just...
If it isn't, it should be perpetual.
But yeah, Jerome, but I think the, the point is, the applicant is looking for just a direction or a consensus direction from the board.
Hard to hear you, hard to hear you, Judd.
How's that? Can you hear me better? Yeah, okay. You know, the applicant is looking, before we dive into, you know, formulating just the basics of the mitigation plan off-site, and legal documentation has to accompany that. The applicant needs to know that it's not going to be an empty exercise, that the board is comfortable with, you know, you know, an application that's going to be dependent on off-site mitigation.
Jen, you want to pull the board?
Sure. I mean, I, I will say that I think, I, I think that we should still encourage the, as, as Jan put it, sort of a full exploitation of the onsite before we go to offsite, but recognizing the difficulty of getting full mitigation, you know, adequate mitigation for our code onsite. We would then, you know, encourage or support the use of the adjacent property. So I think that's the, that's the thing I would look for us to pull the board on. So if, if you're okay with the statement that way, Jerome.
Yeah, except that use of the Land Trust property is not just for the mitigation, it's for storm drainage.
Yeah, it's, that's true. It's also for storm drainage, and it's also, I, I don't quite know, you know, the access question too. So, yeah, I guess, but yes, I, I think that's it. For storm, for stormwater and for mitigation. So I'll, I'll ask, I guess, Maureen.
Well, before you do that, could you just rephrase what it is that we're...
We're asking about?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think what, so Judd, help me if I say this incorrectly. We are being asked whether or not we would condone or agree with, or actually, I guess it's approve in the end, the use of Westchester Land Trust land, offsite land for both stormwater and mitigation, recognizing the difficulty of getting full mitigation and/or stormwater treatment on the, the actual parcel that's under consideration. Is that correct, Judd?
Right. You're not approving it, I think, but the applicant wants to know is that, is this a worthwhile exercise for the applicant to pursue? Is it something that the board is going to give genuine consideration to? So that they, we don't all spin our wheels in terms of exploring use of the, of the Land Trust property, only at the end of the day for the board to say that there's just some underlying, you know, overarching objection to, you know, to the use of that property.
Could you help us identify what, what objection might, I mean, what, what might it be a future objection? The fact that it is, it was given as open space, and this is somehow not natural, natural use of it?
I, I, I can't formulate what the board might object to. I'm just saying, you know, is there, is there, is there an underlying concern? It's really a question for you and your board members. Is there an underlying concern in that regard?
Is there going to be a public hearing on this?
That's up to us.
Well, why, why don't, why don't we wait to see what the people in the, in the neighborhood say? I mean, i- it sounds like it might be something we consider, but, you know, if we're struggling to find out what objections would be, maybe we should hear from the people in the area. Or people.
Yeah, that's a good point. Jen?
Yes, Jerome.
Yeah, I, I think what the applicant is also looking for is an overall conceptual approval, the overall successfulness of this solution, including the off-site treatment of the drainage. And I for one feel that this site treatment is, it's a vast improvement for the reasons mentioned before, both setback, the, both the dealing with drainage, the velocity of dissipation, and probably, and the quantity that gets into the lake before there's treatment. So but it is dependent in this case on the success of that use of the Westchester Land Trust. But I for one would applaud the solution and suggest that we go forward with the completion of these plans and the, and the hearing, but also encourage the applicant to get the written approval.
And if I can, can I, Jerome, and thank you for that. That is actually true. And in speaking with Michael, we were going to request this board to, to let us, or to move forward with a public hearing. At the end of the day, a lot of the open items on the memos are really tied to work that I don't want to invest in until I know this is actually going to end up in, in a project that's going to be approved. A lot of it has to do with engineering, with construction plans, with legal, you know, documents. So I think you put it perfectly, Jerome. What I need from you guys is to please work with me, assuming no objection from the public, to, to just give me that sort of comfort so that then I can invest what has already been a lot of money, really in building what I think is a fantastic plan, you know?
Okay, so let me first ask perhaps, one of the things that Jan, Jan and his memo suggested is that we refer this to the fire department for a view of, of emergency access. Is that something that we can do by consensus?
Yes. And I would also, I would also ask, if you're going to refer to the fire department, if we could also just refer back again to the building inspector to just, because it's a question of code compliance, if there is some question about the status of Old Pond Road, and I think we'd want the building inspector to look at that as well.
Okay, so refer the plan specifically with the, with the...
With regard to access to the fire department and to the building inspector.
Okay, so...
If, if I may, Jen.
Yes.
With respect to the referral to the fire department, we have no objection to the referral, but the board should keep in mind that Billy doesn't have the legal ability to really improve that private road. And, and we're, we're basically, it's a one-to-one swap, or we're removing an existing single-family residence and, and putting a new replacement single-family residence. So in terms of fire department or access, it's, it's a historic condition. And, and much of, and most of that, that lane is either public, or the private part is not under Billy's control. So I wouldn't be surprised if the fire department says it's tight. Everybody knows it's tight. There's not going to be a lot we can do about it, but I would love to hear any comments.
Doesn't he own two out of the three parcels that have frontage on the private road?
He, his, his existing residence does have some frontage. That's the next house out.
If there, if there's, if there's three parcels that front on the private road, the applicant owns two of them.
Correct.
So there may be some potential to widen the driveway if the fire department asks for it. That was also...
Well, one, one of them is shared with Dr. Garasco, so, who's also on the lake. So he, and to do, make changes there might require his. I'm not here to argue the point. I just want the board to keep in mind that there's just so much Billy can do. He'll do what he legally can do, and that's reasonable.
It looks to me now, and I'm looking at parcel lines and surveys that are, might not be, you know, two survey standards, but things that are available on, on, online and parcel maps and Westchester maps. But it looks like that the driveway does go on what is currently MacArthur-owned property. So that's the reason for the question. And some clarification on that.
Just understanding the, the ownership of the private road, and who owns it, and who's got rights to it, and, you know, that all has to be further explored.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll definitely, we'll definitely work on that. Can I just also note, I, I did exchange some communication with the, the highway superintendent. He actually, him and I go way back, because I grant them access to my current road, so they can turn their trucks when, when they're doing work. So he came by, we, we discussed, and, and there may be an opportunity to, to do a little bit of cleaning in, in that road and potentially, you know, trying to level it in, in a way that it's suitable. But there's, there's obviously not going to be an opportunity for a fire truck to, to turn, right? I mean, there is not, even if my current house today has an accident, there's no way, like, a, any truck that's large like that is going to have to come in and pull back. That's just the nature of this road. And I think that was, that's what Michael was trying to basically convey. There's just not much we're going to be able to do other than maintenance, you know, maintenance and, and maybe cleaning up, and maybe widening up a little bit, but it's, it's all going to be relative.
His letter does say, if you're able to increase the width of the road, that would be great. So it looks like he's looking for something.
Yeah, that's, and that's exactly, I think, what I'm intent to do. Again, it's, it's just something that, that I, you know, I see as beneficial for the project, but I wouldn't like this to be, you know, part of a necessity, because again, there's been a couple generations of people living in that house with the road as it is.
So I'm looking for consensus that we refer this to the building inspector and to the fire department, recognizing that that there are limits to what can be done on this dirt road slash private road. So, Maureen?
I agree. So yes, but I do want to state, just for the record, that even though I completely agree that this will be a vast improvement of current conditions, I, the bar is pretty low. Right? So we shouldn't, we shouldn't allow that to be, it, it's the necessary, yet not sufficient condition, right? We, we, we want to make, we want to have everything fit. So I just want to go on record as saying, I, I, I'm excited about this for you. We want to work with you, but we want to get to a place that everybody is comfortable.
Okay, Jerome?
Yeah, you have my consensus. I'm going to agree on it.
Okay. Rich?
I agree.
Greg?
Yes.
And I also feel we should send it to the fire department and to the building inspector, so we will do that. So we have, we have heard what I think might be a request for scheduling a public hearing. I'm, I personally would sort of like a, a little bit more answers to some of these perhaps before we go, but I understand also the, the desire to get some community feedback. Yeah, and it looks like...
I just want to point out that if there is a conveyance of land from the Land Trust to the applicant, and vice versa, that's a lot-line change, subdivision application before the planning board that would also require a public hearing. So before you said it, we might want to figure out all the applications that are in play here before we notice.
Right. Okay, and I think, I think also, at least some members of the community would be interested in knowing what's going to happen with the road, if anything. So that might also be something that would be good to have before we have the public hearing. So, so perhaps there's a little bit more work to be done before we schedule a public hearing. Is there anything else, I think, that, so it's basically getting a little better understanding of the road, and perhaps what's going to happen with Westchester Land Trust?
Can I, can I just ask for better guidance, guys? What do we need? What's a, what's a recommendation from the advisors to the board in terms of what we're supposed to be, what's supposed to be done in that road? The firefighter is not going to, I mean, I need to, I need to ask them for something. What, what do you guys need?
I think the fire department's going to opine about access and what's suitable.
Right.
Bring it to them. There's also a Google question whether you needed a variance to get a building permit on a lot that has no public frontage. I mean, that's, that's why we're referring it to the building inspector.
Yeah, I think it's the ownership of the road is the question. I don't know that the fire department will worry about the ownership, but is this a, is this a shared driveway? Is this an easement across current MacArthur land to get to the future or the new MacArthur land? Is this, what, what is this that we have here?
And the fire department might not have a concern about the width of the driveway, but they might have input about how they are going to turn their apparatus around on the property. That's certainly changing. Now, there's a lot more driveway to play with before. So that, I think it's, it's not just referring it to them for, you know, the current condition of the, of the private road, but also the, the, the site plan and the layout of the lot. And, you know, water and everything else.
You know, in terms of what the applicant said a moment ago about general, having lived in this house, if this were not an application to the planning board, but just a renovation of the existing dilapidated house, this fire department question, I don't think would come up. It would be, the building department would give an approval for renovation. I, I think, if it were just a repair.
But that's, that's, but Jerome, that's not what's being proposed. There's a complete redevelopment of the lot.
I know that, I know that. But so an extension of my thought is that are we putting a certain onus on the, here we have a, an excellent plan that improves the lot, improves the drainage, improves the lake. And if this should come up as an impediment, because there's no other alternative, should that be, should that be the ultimate straw, so to speak? And I would say this too, that I look at areas around town, especially over in Wild Oaks, you know, where there are roads that have been narrowed there that would never be approved today if it were brought up before us for a modification. And yet the fire department still services those areas, as inconvenient as it may be. So I, I just want to put that in, in fairness, that we're not throwing something up here that could become ultimately either a, a project killer, which I don't think would be favorable overall to the applicant or for the lake. That's my own.
I'd like to see what they say. I mean, it, it might be that they find that this is, it gives them the kind of access they need, or they might have a minor, a minor change that could be done. We, we don't really know. We're kind of guessing based on the fact that, at least in my view, you know, fire trucks are big unwieldy things. But I don't really know how, how we don't know what they're going to say. We anticipate a concern. So I don't, I think we ought to have the knowledge and then have to deal with it, rather than not, not refer it. I mean, I think we already agreed to refer it, so. All right, I think the other thing in general, I, I do think we should... I, I do think we should get a better sense of what's really happening with Westchester Land Trust. I think my sense, just as an individual, is that, that it makes sense to reach out and, and use land that currently is undeveloped, has no intention of being developed because it is Westchester Land Trust. And to explore a way to make the whole, the whole project, a better project through the use of adjacent land. So that's, that's my sense of this.
Awesome. In terms of an immediate step that can be taken in that regard, and I'll speak for Jan, but one of the comments Jan made is that he has not even had the opportunity to walk the land trust property yet. So perhaps arranging for a site inspection of that, of that parcel by Jan, you know, with what we have in hand at, at this point in terms of stormwater and wetland mitigation would make sense in terms of moving the process along.
Okay, I, I assume that would be something that's agreeable to the applicant and whoever would be accompanying him on that?
Yes.
Right.
We're happy to do that.
Okay. Is there anything else we should bring up at this point? Okay, I think, I, unfortunately, our next meeting, the, is the 18th. And anything to get on that agenda would have to be submitted in about a week. So that's tight, but if there's anything that can be done, just letting you know the date.
Thanks.
Okay.
Very unfortunate, Janet.
I, I can do my site walk certainly in advance of that meeting if we wanted to at least be on the agenda to further that discussion. May not, I think, you know, there's a lot of probably time that's going to need to go into responding to the comments, but we could move things along by having the site walk report.
That would be great because that would inform a lot of these, the movement on the mitigation and, and stormwater.
Maybe we'll have heard back from the fire department. I mean, certain things get, and the, and the building inspector, we could still make some progress here.
Great.
We, we'd ask to be added to the August 18th agenda and perhaps the board will be more comfortable at that point in time to schedule a public hearing for September.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. MacArthur. Have you spoken to the neighbors down next to your new, your new house, new proposed house?
Yeah, yeah, we're very close. We talk all the time.
Okay. And, and as far as you can tell, no, no issues?
No, they're, they're actually happy because they're going to get rid of that old monster that's next to them. Well, maybe, right? I don't know. I mean, depends on ultimately if my project gets approved or I just need to come in and redo that house.
So, I'm just wondering if, should we schedule a public hearing? Do we have, do we, will we have more information at the next meeting? Only because if there's, if we're waiting to hear what the neighbors are going to say, one of the reasons why we're having the public hearing, yet we have some reason to think that the comments will be positive. Should it, will it move things forward quicker? I mean, you know, if we're looking at September for a public hearing versus August.
The other thing is Bob Garasco was at the Sony board meeting. So that's, that's the neighbor, that my immediate neighbor, he was present at, at the Sony board. Not that that was this, no, we didn't discuss the entire project, but he's been involved. And we've talked about my plans and he's seen the plans many, many times. I know Janet said people may be curious to know what happens to the road. I don't know who, because it's only the two of us. I don't know who else cares about the road, to be honest, but I guess we'll, 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 we'll see.
Yeah, I don't know if, it used to be Mrs. D. Lou and the, the first house there that's on the lake, right at the end, right sort of their driveway is before yours.
Yeah, yeah. They, yeah, I, I know who, who you.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's Davy and the sister's actually moving there now.
I, I know in the past they've been concerned about their driveway getting run off from the road. So I don't know. And then I think, you know, the, even the people on the opposite side of the cove will probably be curious about the plans. I think they'll probably be positive about it. But, you know, the lake community is relatively small and have people, I think, one of, one of my concerns right now is that it's not like people can go down to the planning board office and say, I want to see the plans and see what's going to happen when they start seeing equipment on the site and so forth. And so having a planning board, sorry, a public hearing does, even if we're not hearing from them, it gives them a chance to, gives everyone a chance to see all the plans at once and then can, can be a little more comfortable about activities happening around the lake. Because people do get, as you know, Billy, people get protective about it.
No, totally. I totally understand. We, that's why we were hoping to do the, the hearing as soon as possible.
Yeah. And getting, getting back to Maureen's point, which I think is a good one. Yes, we have a lot of work to do. The, the project team, the engineers, the landscape folks have a lot of work. There's a lot of detail that has to be finalized. So we, even though there is work to be done, I think the, the position of the buildings, the sizing of the buildings, and the general plan, I think, seems to be in a direction the board is comfortable with. So we'd rather get the public input sooner so that our project team can respond to it, react to it, incorporate it and, and move. And, and then Billy can start writing checks again to his team to finalize the plans.
Kirsten, do you have any sense of what all is on our agenda yet for August? I know we've had a few things coming in.
Right, a few new things. So Gossett's Brothers Nursery will come for site plan. Possibly we'll see Handler again, Stein Residence, Aston Residence. And then revisiting Valencia, the wetland violation on Route 35.
Okay.
And of course, the board need not be reminded that if you want to hold the public hearing open in August, you can hold it over.
Right.
And we'd be no worse off than if we just started September.
I see Jerome had his hand up. I think, are you, do we have to unmute you?
You're on mute.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the sentiment that Maureen expressed and seconded by, confirmed by Michael. Sooner the better, but I think we, we want to be prudent and make sure that we have documents in hand that would not, that if not achievable, would materially affect the design. We want to go back to a, a second public hearing if it changes. So I think that should be the threshold if that can be achieved in the next few, few days. And I'd be in favor of a public hearing in August, yeah.
Well, I think we have to decide tonight. So, you know, I'm looking for the, the sense of everyone on that. I'm, I, I personally am a little hesitant, but I can go with the, the sense of the board.
So Jen, if you could help me understand, and you may have done this already, I apologize. If you could tell me why you'd be hesitant about having the public hearing in August versus September?
I think there's, I, I mean, I think the major open things are what's happening with the road, which shouldn't change the plans too much, but it is that. And what is happening with, whether the, the area that is currently Westchester Land Trust land is going to be used as stormwater mitigation and.
The intent of the, of the piece of property?
Right.
Will it be sold to Mr. MacArthur? Not, well, wouldn't, couldn't we? I mean, that's really on the, the, the burden of the applicant to find out the state of the road. Is it private? Who owns it?
Yep.
Et cetera. And also to have Jan walk the property and then have, get some information on this, what the intent is for the possible transaction.
Sure. I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm okay. And I do recognize Michael's comment that we could always hold it open longer.
May, may, if you notice the public hearing, and I have no issue with having a public hearing or starting to receive public comment, closing the hearing might be another story. But if you, if you notice a public hearing for a wetland permit, and then sometime in the future, you realize that there's going to be a conveyance of land that requires a public hearing for the lot line change or subdivision, you would have to renotice. So that's.
Right.
hesitation on my part.
So would we be able to find out that information through the intent of the exchange of the land?
Yeah, but you'd be making, you'd be, you'd be noticing something that you don't have an application on and you don't have a plan for. And that we don't know where that lot lines may end up.
So if we, if we don't think that there's going to be a transaction of land and therefore there's not a lot line change, and therefore then there's no subdivision.
That would clear things up.
Point.
Correct.
Okay. So, Michael, can, can you guys find that?
Well, let me, let me clarify that for you, Maureen, because what I've heard is, what I've discussed, and my intent is to ultimately achieve an agreement with the Westchester Land Trust. But that's not my priority today. That may happen in three years, in five years, and sometime in the future. I'm not gonna, I'm not going to seek a formal process with them today. Today, my focus is to build my house, I guess.
Okay.
They've, they've, they've told us that they're going to grant us access to their land. And I'm sure they're going to be willing to put that in perpetuity. And some point after we are, you know, my intent is to ultimately do a more formal swap. But that swap may be in the form of a swap of a change in, in, in property line, of just a perpetual easement. I don't know what that's going to look like. I don't expect to have a, a public hearing for that process anytime soon, right? So I think for now, all we know is they're willing and happy to let us use their, their, their land. We're going to document that once you guys tell us that's suitable. And I mean, in some point in the future, I intend to, to enter into a transaction with them.
Is that agreement going to allow you to use patio in the dock?
Yes. It allows 60 feet into the property for all sorts of work, maintenance, including putting a chair and sitting on the chair.
But there, there's a formal dock and a patio there that they're going to allow you to continue to use that?
I, I haven't focused on that because as I was telling Janet, that dock can be moved. That, that patio has been there forever. I, I didn't put the patio there. It's been sitting there forever. So I, I, I could care less, John, if I just move my stuff six, six, six feet to the left and put some bushes to separate the, the property. I don't care, right? I mean, the focus now is to get the mitigation, because that's what's needed for this approval. I don't care if, you know, I, I mean, I don't need to use that patio. That's not part of my intent.
Okay, thank you. That, I think that does help to clarify that, that we're not going to end up with a lot line change as part of this application. Or it's not your intent to have that happen. That is, that is helpful. Okay, Rich or Greg, do either one of you have any?
Jerome has his hand up.
Oh, Jerome, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to address the comment of the applicant. I think the board did, 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 did give consensus some moment ago that the mitig, that the storm drainage mitigation solution as presented is acceptable. And so I think you, it's imperative that you get something in writing. With a verbal okay or some sentiment that they mentioned verbally is not going to cut it as far as I'm concerned. I'd like to see a letter of intent or something in writing to that effect, then it can be firmed up legally at a later date.
We understand.
Yeah.
Okay. If there was a little ambiguous in the question's statement.
And just to note, there is a letter of intent that has been filed with this, with this planning board.
Okay, there is? Okay. Jan, have you seen it?
It, it speaks to the mitigation. It doesn't speak anything other than their intent to allow the applicant to access the property to install mitigation.
Oh, so it should be more comprehensive then.
Okay, so I think the question before us right now is, do we want to have a public hearing in August? Or do we feel like we need more information and want to start it in September or later? I think I've heard Maureen is saying, let's go for August. Jerome, I'm not quite.
August, it's fine.
Rich?
August is fine.
August, Greg?
I'll go with the consensus.
Okay, so we've got three for August that are firm. So let's, I guess we will say, start, at least open the public hearing in August. So we will see you at the next meeting. There, please make sure you get with Kirsten because we've got a slightly different format now for public hearings and for the notice for public hearings. So because of the Zoom meetings, so we'll make sure it's, it's, gives, how to, how to get on by Zoom and how to get information about the plans.
Will do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think that, I think that's the end of any, I'm assuming there's no more comments on this application at this point, right? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a wetland permit review for calendar number 41-18 WP. The Handler Residence at 25 Woodway Road, South Salem, New York. This was a application that had come before the board. And the, the board actually requested that DEC become lead agent. So we have not seen it for a while. And I think probably Jerry or Jay want to tell us where we stand now, where they stand now.
Good evening. For the record, Jay Fain, Jay Fain and Associates. It's a pleasure to see you all. Prefer to do it in person, but we'll deal with what we have. Yes, I'd spent a long undertaking with the DEC. I think we started the process about a year and a half ago. And there was no discussion really about the substance of the application yet. DEC was fine with what, everything we wanted to do. If you recall, it was a type one action because we're treating more than 10 acres of land. So we had to go for, you know, an environmental review with, with the DEC. And while you think the DEC would be on board with Processing Seeker, they don't do it very much. It just, it just isn't something they do. So it took us a while to get through them, to get everything circulated, published and done. But we are done now. We did get our, both our aquatic pesticide permit and our DEC freshwater permit. And we're ready to go on that. With that being said, we'd very much like to move forward with this board and schedule a public hearing for your August 18th meeting, if at all possible.
Okay. And let me just, I know we don't have a memo from you, Jan, on this. But this is something that we could delegate to you. If I understand correctly, there's nothing in the code that says it has to be a planning board meeting, a, a planning board approval, right? Wetland permit?
You can delegate any wetland permit application to.
Yeah.
Administrator.
Okay, we did have some public comments when it came through. I think it was a year and a half ago, there were some concerns in the community about this. My question is a little bit, now that the, you know, now that DEC has handled the secret process and done a neg deck on, presumably finding minimal, if any, environmental impact. I'm, I'm not sure what, what conditions or anything we might put in a wetland permit. What we could put in a wetland permit, having seen the neg deck or having not seen, but having, having known that the DEC. Having known that the DEC has given a neg deck on this. I'm, I'm just not totally clear what our role is.
I would agree, and I would move to, move this to administrative approval. In that the lead agency has provided a neg deck. And it doesn't seem to be any significant environmental impact. This is maintenance and I'm satisfied if they go administrative. That's my motion.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Greg has seconded it. Any discussion comments? I guess the first thing should be, Yon, would you be comfortable with this as an administrative permit? Given what you know at the time?
Yeah, sure. We have a, we have a memo about five or six comments dating back from October 2018. I talked to Jay this afternoon, and he's in the process of responding to those comments if he hasn't done so already. So you absolutely have no, no reservations.
Any other?
I have a question. So, given that Roundup has such a wonderful reputation these days. I'm just curious to ask Jay, hi Jay. If, if you could give us your perspective on, is it? The way the memo reads, it's 20 acres using Roundup. It sounds like it's using Roundup on 20 acres, so if you could just help us, help me understand that a little better, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, a cou- couple of things. Roundup is a, is like a clean, is like Kleenex. It's a generic term for glyphosate. I guess glyphosate is the chemical that we would be using to treat these, these weeds, noxious invasive weeds with. We looked at every chemical under the sun, and while glyphosate may have a negative connotation in terms of the press. There is no question in terms of toxicity in comparison to other chemicals out there. It has a low toxicity. I could comment on it some more, but I think it's best to leave it like that. We don't want to have to use chemicals, but we need to. There's no other way of. Accomplish a restoration, environmental restoration on this scale with fragmites. There's no other, you can't do it by hand. You can't put salt down. You can't do black plastic. We, we know all the different alternative methods that can be used on a limited scale. But if we're going to achieve a successful restoration here, we have to use the tools that are available to us. And that's why we have from the DEC, from the aquatic pesticides people, a very extensive laundry list of precautions. And things that we have to follow, including drawing down the, the water before we apply, so it doesn't drain offsite. You know, weather conditions have to be right. This has to be done by a licensed individual with knowledge of the material that to be used. With all those precautions in place, we feel this is going to be a very safe project. Keep in mind that you or I, or any of the neighbors of the handlers could go to Home Depot tomorrow and buy as much phosphate, phosphate as they want. And apply it anywhere on their property without any restrictions whatsoever, but we're going through, you know, a very regulated process. So I think we feel very comfortable with this, and we feel the end result of this is going to be not only good for the handlers. But good for the overall environment. This is a significant habitat in town, and we're going to be improving it.
If I can add to, this, the application of herbicides is only one of the tools that we are looking to utilize. In order to restore this meadow. We're also going to be removal of, of plant material, mowing supplemental plantings. And it's going to be done over the course of time. So this is, you know, it's, it's an as needed, if needed situation. It's not that we're looking to be able to use that as our first choice or first tool that we would go to. And I think there's been a lot of care given to devising a plan that would. You'd be cautious and, and careful about the amount and the time and the circumstances under which they're besides supply.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second to make this project administrative. So I will now poll Maureen.
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I also say yes, so. The motion passes that this will be handled administratively.
Thank you very much. I know our client will be very happy to be able to move ahead with it. It has been a long process in, in trying to get here, so thanks so much for your cooperation.
Right, and I'm sure that you all will, will, I mean, I will abide by all the restraints and constraints. That are given by DEC, so thank you.
Also, we'll keep the board informed of the progress of the project, something that we feel that the board is a stakeholder in the project. Stakeholders are very important, so we'll keep you apprised of the progress of the project.
That would be great, thank you.
Thanks so much.
We have Yon on board to do that, by the way. He's, he's going to keep his eyes on it. Thanks.
Yeah.
Stay well.
Thank you, you too. Thanks. The next item on the agenda is correspondence from the town of New Canaan about test holes for the mill dam. Even though this is being done in the town of New Canaan, it's being done within 500 feet of the town line. I think the question that we have is really from the town board. Whether we, as the planning board, have any objection. There's really not, we don't have a heck of a lot of information on it, but certainly maintenance of a, of a dam is an important thing. I don't know, Yon, do you have any more insights into this?
I don't, I, like you said, we don't have a significant amount of information on the project. It's being referred to the. Supposed to be referred to the town board, the town board is, I guess, referred it to you. Under kind of like the general municipal law provisions, just a notification, there's nothing you need to do with it. I believe it really has to do with some initial investigative work and borings in the dam. I don't see how it would have any impact on Lewisboro. I'm not sure there's anything for you to do here.
Yeah, I mean, so I think about all that I feel that we could do is ask for, you know, draft a memo. Or send a memo, I should say, to the town board, saying that the planning board has no objection to the. Proposed activity.
Just a.
Jerome?
Out of curiosity, Yon, is, is there any heavy equipment or anything that could go over town roads that might damage the roads? Where we might want to have before and after photos, just in case?
I'm not, to be honest, Jerome, I'm not even exactly sure where the dam is. Certainly not Brown's dam that we dealt with, but would they come from, I'm, I'm guessing excess is off Silver Spring. I'm not sure that they would come up East Street.
I, I, it might be in the other direction, though, on the other side, to the west of Silver Mine. Of course, no, Silver Mine is Norwalk, not New Canaan.
Yes, it's further.
Not the Silver Spring.
Silver Spring, I, I'm not sure that is, but I would think it'd be west, west of 123, I guess.
But, I mean, I'm guessing it's going to be one drill rig that goes in once and does some initial borings. It's going to come in on a tractor, it's going to come in on a trailer. I, I, I wouldn't think there'd be, in this initial investigation phase, any impact to the road.
I have no idea, but I just wonder if it's CYA. Notification. We recommend that the town board send them a letter saying. Protect our road or whatever, you know, if there's any damage to the road, it's on you. Just a thought. Just a thin air, yes. I'll leave it to, to Judd to suggest whether or not that's a remote possibility.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think in this instance, Jerome. I mean, it's, it, it indicates it's a limited project for limited borings, just to check stability as a, as an initial phase. I, I would, I, I think we can just, at this stage, really offer no comment. And I, you know, if you want to, even if you want to just, if you want to memorialize it as, as Jan suggesting with a, a quick memo to the town board. That you, you looked at it and, you know, the planning board has no objection. I think that's probably the. The prudent course here.
Okay.
Okay, so do we, can we just?
Quick motion, just a, yeah, quick motion.
Okay.
Now, we will, we'll contact the board indicating that we have no further interest in pursuing. Project.
Okay. No interest necessarily?
No comment. You're offering no comment.
Offering no comment, okay. Seconded, okay. Any other discussion? All right, polling the board, Maureen.
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I also say yes, so the motion is carried and we will get that. Letter to the town board. Now, we have minutes of June 16th, 2020. This is again, pretty much the transcript with the comments and summarizing the motions that were added. I think one of the things that Kirsten recently sent out, which you might not have seen, is a comparison of the transcript as it comes. Well, a copy of the transcript as it comes from Zoom and then what it eventually looks like. So you can see that, but it does take a little bit of work to get the. All right, you moved to approve. That was Rich and. It looks like, I see hands. Maureen seconds. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Maureen, oh, see, I'm sorry, should, Maureen, Jerome?
Hi.
Rich?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I also approve. Okay, our next meeting date is August 18th. I guess I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. All right, Jerome. And Maureen seconds, okay. Maureen, I'm sorry, any discussion? Movie scene, no, no need for discussion. Maureen, your vote?
Yes.
Jerome? Rich? Yes, thumbs up, that's a yes. Greg?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you all. We are adjourned for the night. Thank you, Kirsten.
Thank you.
Yes.
You too.